You good? Katie, is there a sheet back there? Okay.
I just was.
Okay. Okay, cool. The light is off in the foyer, just so you, the light in the foyer is off. Always worried someone's gonna trip.
Yeah.
Oh, the, um, that's all right. Cool. All right. Good evening, everybody. I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. Welcome to the Euclid Township Board of Supervisors October Meeting. If you could all stand with me to recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States and to the republic which stands one in each.
All right, I'd like to announce that the board met in an executive session this evening, October fourteenth, to discuss litigation. And with that, we'll move into approval of the minutes of the September ninth board meeting and the October seventh workshop meeting. Is there a motion on the floor?
To make a motion to approve the minutes of September ninth and October seventh.
I'll second.
Any board questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll call the vote. All in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Um, before we begin tonight, I just wanted to read a brief statement into the record regarding the Downingtown Area School District Sales Agreement for the Siemens property. On October ninth, the Downingtown Area School District announced their intention to enter into a sales agreement with Rockwell Development Group for the Siemens property, also referred to as Lyonville Station Farm. According to their announcement, the Downingtown Area School District plans to present a proposed sales agreement at the November school board meeting, where the agreement details will be made public for the first time. The township does not have advanced access to the details of the sales agreement and has not had any communication with nor received an application from the Rockwell Development Group. The township is unaware of what Rockwell Development Group may be proposing for this property, nor are we aware of any details regarding the agreement between Rockwell Development Group and Downingtown Area School District. This means that the Siemens property is not an agenda item at the October Euclid Township Board of Supervisors meeting. We know that many of our residents have a strong interest in what may happen with this property. While we welcome public input at our meetings, we encourage those wanting to provide comments on this property to wait until an application has been submitted to the township for review and is listed for discussion on the agenda. This will help us to arrange for the meeting to be held at a venue large enough to accommodate all those who wish to attend, as well as ensure that other township business can continue without interruption. Agendas are posted in advance to the township website and are shared on our social media. You can also sign up for our agenda alerts on our website. Moving along to our reports for the evening, we will start with our police report. Chief Alexander.
Uh, thank you and good evening. For the month of September twenty twenty-four, the Euclid Township Police Department officers documented one thousand seventy-eight entries in the police department call reporting system. During the reporting period, the officers issued ninety-three traffic citations, they investigated thirty-three motor vehicle crashes, and they arrested twenty-one individuals. Additionally, for the month of September, the department members conducted one motor carrier detail at the weigh station, resulting in four hundred sixty-five commercial motor vehicles being weighed, one of which was found to be overweight. During the detail, the officers performed five inspections. However, none of the vehicles or their respective drivers needed to be placed out of service. During the details, the officers were assisted by a member of the Coatesville City Police Department. A year to date, the officers have documented nine thousand six hundred twenty-eight entries in our call reporting system. They've arrested one hundred sixty-seven individuals, they've written nine hundred thirty-eight traffic citations, four hundred fifty-nine written warnings. They've investigated two hundred seventy-four motor vehicle crashes, and they have put six thousand eight hundred eleven vehicles over our scales. And, uh, for the month, we had no Narcan administrations.
Great, thank you, chief. Uh, our treasurer's report.
Um, good evening. Through the month of September in our general fund, we have collected just under eighty-four percent of our budgeted revenues and have spent just over eighty-one percent of our budgeted expenditures.
Great, thank you. Our public works report, Mr. Cagle.
Uh, thank you, ma'am. Uh, there was five point six inches of rain recorded for the township in the month of September. Normal rain for September is four point one inches. Normal rain total for year to date is thirty-five point two, and the current year to date is thirty-two point six, which means we're about three inches below, uh, the normal average. We reported, uh, one point two eight million gallons, uh, average flow to, to the Downingtown Treatment Plant. There were a hundred and fifty-three Pennsylvania one calls for the month. Uh, all of the pump stations were operating normally for the month. Eagleview wastewater treatment plant, sandblasting and painting are still underway, uh, in the process tank. Sandblasting and coating are approximately eighty-five percent complete. Uh, we're still waiting on a report and potential change order for additional metal repairs needed after the sandblasting. Um, but we're, we're moving quickly towards that. Uh, the goal is to get half of the operation up and running and then be able to do the additional repairs. Uh, additionally, the road crew, uh, focused largely on the Williamsburg basketball court, getting that completed. And they, they started, uh, actually this, about last week, they started, uh, the Shmona Creek Stream Bank lining project. Um, and also in the month of September, they demolished the garage at the senior park, making way for us to, uh, install a bathroom there.
Great, thank you. The fire marshals report.
Uh, yes, for the month of September, the building department issued a hundred and seven permits for construction. A total of a hundred and sixteen inspections were conducted. Nine fire inspections were completed. Fifty-five use and occupancy certificates were issued, and the fire marshal responded to sixteen incidents during working hours and conducted one burning complaint.
And Lyonville Fire Company?
Uh, Lyonville Fire Company responded to forty-three incidents during the month of September. Twenty-six of those were in Euclid, four in Upper Euclid, five were in West Pike Lynn, and eight were in other municipalities. Uh, the total responses for twenty twenty-four, five hundred and forty.
Great, thank you. Is there anyone here from Euclid Ambulance tonight? Right, is there a motion to approve the reports?
I'll make a motion to approve the reports.
I'll second. Any board questions or comments? Uh, any public comments? Go ahead and call the votes. All in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Moving along to our business agenda for this evening. Number one is approval for police department promotions. Chief Alexander.
Uh, yes, thank you again. Uh, for many months, the police department has been engaged in a promotion process. Uh, after the retirement of a number of officers, last year, uh, we had several, uh, openings in our first line supervisor positions specifically for the rank of sergeant. Uh, the officers were, uh, permitted to study for many months for the upcoming promotion process, uh, as they were going to be taking the Pennsylvania First Line Supervisor exam for, as part of that process, uh, as well as completing two oral interviews as part of the process, and then going through a personnel, uh, review as well as part of that. Um, I'm happy to say that we are at the end of that, uh, process at this point. And this evening, I'm requesting approval to promote Officer Jason O'Neal and Officer Maria Madione, uh, to the position of sergeant at a ceremony with a date to be determined.
Wonderful, thank you.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the permissions of, uh, Officer Jason O'Neal and Maria Madione.
I'll second that. Any board questions or comments?
Just like to say congratulations to both Officers Madione and O'Neal. And the township residents are very lucky to have them on the, in the department. And we're glad that they're with us.
Agreed. Any public comment? Seeing none, I'll call the vote. All in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Moving along to number two, appointments to the Community Day Committee.
Kate Carpenter, Joanna Benton, and Barbara Phillips are looking to seek reappointment to this committee.
I'll make a motion to appoint, reappoint Kate Carpenter, Joanna Benton, and Barb Phillips to the Community Day Committee.
I'll second that. Any board questions or comments?
Just that we appreciate all our volunteers.
Certainly. Thank them for their eagerness to continue making this a fun event for our community. Any public comment? Seeing none, I'll call the vote. All in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Moving along to number three, approval of road department laborer new hire.
Uh, we're seeking approval to hire David Moyer as a new road department laborer. David comes to us with more than twenty-five years of experience as a laborer working with Enbridge. Following a layoff, he's looking to join our team and, uh, will get a great benefit from his experience. This hire will fill all outstanding vacancies within the road department, although we know one of our members will be leaving soon for the State Police Academy. And we still have one vacancy in sewer that we're looking to fill. So if anyone knows anyone, keep us in mind.
We're a great place to work.
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, David, the hire of David Moyer for the road department laborer.
I'll second that. Any board questions or comments? Any public comment? Seeing none, call the vote. All in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Number four, snow contractors bid permission to proceed.
The township advertised for snow bids on July twentieth and on August ninth. There were no bids submitted at that time. The township rebid on August twenty-ninth and September twelfth. Once again, no, we did not receive bids. The township is looking for permission to proceed by contacting contractors for snow removal operations and also looking for permission for the township manager to sign snow contracts on behalf of the township.
Make a motion to, uh, permit the township to proceed with contacting contractors and the township manager to sign contracts with these contractors.
I'll second that. Any board questions or comments? Just wanna say it's not gonna snow, so this will all be for nothing. Maybe just a little bit, it was pretty. One sleddable snow. Uh, any public comments? Seeing none, I'll call the vote. All in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Number six, oh, no, number five. Bid award recommendation, PennDOT Greenlight Go Seven Grant for Traffic Signal Improvements.
The bids were received on October eighth at ten AM. CM High Incorporated was the low bidder at three hundred and thirty-seven thousand, one hundred dollars. The engineer Bowman has reviewed the bid and is, it is in order and acceptable. Bowman has sent a letter recommending that CM High Incorporated be awarded the bid for the Greenlight Go Seven, which is upgrading the traffic devices along Route one thirteen.
I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the, uh, word of the bid to, uh, for Greenlight Go Seven to, uh, CM High Incorporated.
I'll second that. Any board questions or comments? Any public comment? Seeing none, I'll call the vote. All in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Number six, bid award recommendation, Euclid Township Municipal Waste Collection and Disposal Services.
Uh, we're recommending a bid award to Whitetail Disposal LLC in response to the municipal waste slash rubbish recyclable material bulk items leaf and yard waste collection and disposal services bid. It's mouthful. Uh, the contract would be for three years in the total amount of four million, eight hundred fifty-six thousand, six hundred nine dollars and ninety-five cents. There would be two one-year options on the contract totaling an additional three twenty-eight million. Uh, this is the price for option two, uh, which is for the twenty leaf and yard waste pickups. Represents a little over a five hundred and sixty-three thousand dollar increase over the course of the next three years. Uh, I'll note that year one is only an eighteen thousand dollar increase over our current cost. Some of the highlights of the bid and Whitetail's response include the use of an automated arm throughout the township, except where it's not feasible, such as areas in Rhonda. This also means providing all trash customers with one ninety-six gallon toter for trash and one ninety-six gallon for, uh, toter for recycling. Smaller toters will be made available upon request. Moving the entire township to a single collection day, uh, this includes trash, recycling, leaf and yard waste, and bulk trash. Maintaining twenty leaf and yard waste pickups per year on days designated by the township and reducing the bulk pickup to once per month and requiring scheduling ahead of time. Uh, in speaking with Whitetail's current municipal customers, there were only positive comments. And if approved, we'll begin working on the logistics of transitioning and the development of educational materials, as well as holding at least one educational session for the public.
Wonderful, thank you.
I'll make a motion to award the contract for the municipal waste collection and disposal services to Whitetail Disposal LLC.
I'll second that. Any board questions or comments? I just wanted to thank the staff for landing where we landed with this. I think that this is an excellent opportunity for the township. I've also heard very positive things about Whitetail Disposal, and I know that the community has been through a lot with trash collection and questions this year. Not just ours, but the entire region has dealt with the same things. And, uh, I'm looking forward to this new contract. I think it's gonna be an improvement and hopefully, uh, everybody will be happy with it. Any?
Next stop, composting pickup.
Next. Uh, are there any public comments? Seeing none, I'll call the vote. All in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. Uh, moving along to number seven, resolution number twenty twenty-four thirteen, authorizing the township manager to sign PennDOT Winter Services Agreement. Did we already, it's part of the, again, it's good.
So, yeah, so this, um, is an agreement that we have in place with PennDOT. Um, the current one is expiring, it's ten years old. So this, again, this resolution is just, again, authorizing the township manager to execute all the documents to ensure efficient maintenance during the winter seasons. And, um, we, um, this is for another ten years.
Great, thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirteen, uh, authorizing the township manager to sign PennDOT Winter Services. Agreed.
I'll second that. Any board questions or comments? Any public comment? Seeing none, I'll call the vote. All in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Moving along to number eight, resolution number twenty twenty-four fourteen, Gray Farm, ten twenty-five Orthington Road, preliminary final land development plan approval. Mr. Freed?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this is, um, on the Gray Farm Land Development site back in twenty twenty, uh, an application was submitted for preliminary land approval. Uh, it went through, um, a number of, uh, meetings in front of the planning commission as well as the board. Uh, one of the unique aspects of the township ordinance is that, um, land development preliminary or final cannot be issued unless you have a clean site. Ultimately, the, the, that the preliminary, uh, land development application was denied based on that. Uh, there were some appeals, there were some court proceedings. Ultimately, the parties agreed, um, that the applicant would go ahead and do the cleanup. And if and when they were able to get the sign off from DEP on the cleanup, they would come back for an application on preliminary final land development. They have received, uh, both a, uh, approval of the groundwater, um, which is a final report, and then approval of the, of the, the standards for the groundwater as well as approval for the soils now. Clean site, it's now, uh, eligible, uh, for, uh, preliminary and final land development under the agreement. There are certain terms that have to be complied with, which are pretty standard, uh, requirements of land development. So we're at the point now, um, where there's a proposed resolution that would, um, i- if the, the board is so inclined to approve, um, would require the applicant to comply with all terms and conditions of the settlement agreement and release that laid out the standard requirements for, uh, land development. Um, the applicant will comply with all terms and conditions of the groundwater final report issued, um, submitted to DEP and DEP's approval of that report. And the applicant will comply with all terms and conditions of the soil final report that was submitted to DEP as well as with DEP's approval of that.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash fourteen, uh, for the preliminary final land development plan for one zero two five Orthington Road.
I'll second that. Is there any board questions or comments? Is there any public comment? If you could just come up to the microphone and state your name? Thanks.
We really haven't seen much action at the site in terms of cleanup. There doesn't seem to have been trucks, trucks. Their, their reactions, I don't even know that it's happened.
Uh, that pass happened, um, they removed soils and caro from the site. They submitted a plan, pretty extensive plan to DEP. DEP issued a letter approving the plan last month.
So I completely missed all that. That's literally my background.
Uh, the applicants here, they might be able to explain a little bit more about the activities that took place.
Mr. Freed, if I can, um, Mr. Iodano, could you just kind of outline the process that the applicant went through in the township's oversight of that cleanup process?
Sure, um, I'm not sure of the exact dates when the cleanup actually did occur. Um, but the township had a pre-construction meeting. We did meet with the township engineer and the applicant and their engineers, the conservation district as well. Uh, we did hire an environmental consultant that was on site the entire time for the cleanup. Um, and we received no complaints at all. And the, um, applicant and our environmental consultant had submitted, um, like, final documentation showing that the site was remediated. And the applicant then sent their report to DEP for final approval, which they received.
Great, thank you. Are there any public comments? Any other board questions or comments? No, good. Um, seeing none, I'll go ahead and call the vote. All in favor? Aye. Motion passes. I'm gonna move on to the announcements for this evening. All meetings will be at the township building unless otherwise noted. On October fifteenth, which is tomorrow evening, we will be hosting an open space referen- referendum informational meeting here at the township building at seven PM. On October seventeenth, the Environmental Advisory Council Workshop Meeting will be meeting at seven PM. On October eighteenth, the Industrial Development Authority Meeting will take place at nine fifteen AM. On October twenty-second, the municipal authority will be meeting at four PM. On October twenty-third, the zoning hearing board will be meeting at seven PM to discuss one seventy-nine Dan's Lane and eight fifty North Pottstown Pike. On November fourth, the Board of Supervisors will hold a workshop meeting at twelve PM. I'm sorry, I skipped one. On November third, um, the Township Environmental Advisory Council will be holding a fall into fall event here at the township building from eleven thirty to one thirty PM. Um, they'll be handing out native tree seedlings and doing a winter seed sowing demo if anyone is interested in stopping by. On November fourth, the Parks and Recreation Committee will be meeting at seven PM. On November sixth, the Planning Commission Meeting will take place at seven PM. And on November eleventh, the Board of Supervisors Meeting will take place at seven PM. Go ahead and open up to the public for comments. Um, when I call your name, if you could just approach the microphone and state your name for the record. Ben Grisler?
I wonder, particularly more than good, is there any way that we can increase, uh, the attention paid to traffic violations there? You can just partner yourself at church, watch that, and give it two, three cycles. You will see people blasting through the red light every single time. I've had to teach my kids, when they're driving to stop, wait, give it a couple seconds. Wait for the cars to go through the red light, and then you can turn or go through or do whatever you want. Certainly we can get some more patrol there.
And it's
Dangerous, and it's dangerous at the other intersections, but
It is a dangerous I'm certainly follow up on that. Thank you. Andrew Casey? Did I say that right? Oh, Andrew Casey? He left, okay. His loss. Josh? John?
John Chadzie.
John Chadzie? Sorry.
Okay, Chadzie, six fifteen fires were over. First of all, I'd like to thank you all for calling Donald Sees or having done their full presentation. And never, first it's, anyway, um, what I, I mentioned here for about the intersection, Lyonville Station, Carmer Road, Fire Road, which is right where my driveway is. And that intersection has become so ridiculously a massive increase of traffic. The road, they, they've sort of fixed Fire Road a year to go. So now you go twice as fast as you couldn't before. Um, for you, the, the stop sign, I don't know if you're familiar with the triangle housing center. When you come down Lyonville Station Road, you, you split to go, uh, let's see, to the east or west around that house. The angle that that meets going right, which is where my driveway is, there's a stop sign there. Um, the chance of somebody stopping is small. And last Thursday, we, we've learned living there that you can't pull out there if a car coming from a direction. This is just, it's staggering what I've, last Thursday, uh, myself, my wife, and my three little dogs, we were almost left sided by a gentleman in a white pickup who ran the stop sign probably at about five months earlier. And we missed by about this much because I floored him, swerved. And he was busy. I don't even know that he saw it. There's a huge puddle there that's been there, it's four feet long, my about so wide by about that people, he was swerving to miss that. Anyway, so it just, it's like, it's like, uh, not really joking, it's kind of like Mad Max down there. Yeah, and just the increase in traffic. And so anyway, I called West Pikeham Township today and spoke with Joe Mono, their township manager. And turns out, which I didn't know, I thought that intersection was all Euclid is the line right there. Turns out half of that is, I guess that the, the line is right through that house. And I want to implore you to, when this deal goes through or whatever comes before you, when the Siemens property, that part of that deal be making that intersection the proper intersection. And I know Hank is proposing moving it. Because that's a very strange piece of land and sleep horses. They propose to begin across the street and then making that a, you know, a intersection, which would totally fix it. Um, however, that, that's probably a long way off before we get to that. So anyway, um, something needs to be done now before, I don't know, there are wrecks, there are wrecks there. But in fact, that there hasn't been catastrophic wreck, and maybe there has, I don't know. Uh, but it is just downright scary. And so anyway, I am, Joe's, I don't know, is coming out on site tomorrow. So I don't know if someone from the township wants to hear about that. He's saying he would have to work with you plus Fire Road is a state road. So we have to make a mask because all these had to release.
Yeah. Yeah.
Nothing matters.
Uh, we can certainly follow up on that. We can certainly follow up on that.
If there's anyone on Lionville Station Road, do not pull that high traffic. I have whole bit involved with so many wrecks there. And I'm aware of what's going on. I had people try to pass me while I'm trying, I'm waiting for a car on Lionville Station Road. You have to let them go because they, they think I'm, I'm not sure.
I'd be happy. Mr. Cagle, is that something we can follow up with West Pike Lane and certainly future conversations to be had, but we can we can touch base after the meeting. Great. I appreciate your comment.
I mean, really fix that intersection. Something that needs to be done now, somewhat, but that made it a progress.
Understood. Thank you very much. Loretta Izzy?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, did I pronounce that right? Are you able to come up to the microphone? Thank you. Just so that everybody listening can hear. Thank you. Oh, you signed up on the public comment sheet. So you certainly don't have to make a public comment. That'll be at the conclusion of the, no, no problem. It's nice to meet you. All right. Seeing no other public comments?
Well, bless all the people that sign up. Is there any random comment?
Is there any other public comments for this evening? Sure. If you can come up. And just in the future, for your reference, if you guys can sign up, that way we make sure we have a record of everyone and go through it. No, it's okay. Thank you.
Recently, I would say, I guess it was in July, in the summer, the roads were resurfaced in some form. Actually, I don't remember the proper terminology, but it was like a ball shape. And then there was another round of sealing afterwards. I don't know exactly when it was in that problem, but definitely in that time. There were, well, first of all, the road is not smooth. It's not flat. You definitely see anyway. But I did find, as I was looking around the neighborhood, maybe ten or twelve inch pieces of metal, about an eighth of an inch wide, just along the curb and everywhere it faces. I mean, I, I picked a bunch up. I started walking. I think I saw another one the other day, but and I knew there was a street sweeper that came around. So I don't know what equipment it was from, but whoever did that project, I know other people are came and said they, they really don't like how it was done. So the, the metal pieces that were left behind is all around the neighborhood. The other thing I saw with it is the, the storm reeds, when they put down the tar and shit or oil shit. They just ran right over those. So like all this oil or whatever that is reeds or whatever, either, you know, mine probably went down into the system, which I know I, I think our township had, I started to turn over the environment. And it just really disappointed me, surprised at what I saw. Because you see the tar or whatever it is, well, why didn't it rate the upgrade itself? So you know that, we don't want to say I'm breaking down besides whatever might brought off.
Right. Can I have you follow up with our township staff just on the specifics of, I mean, we do a lot of roadwork throughout the township. So just with the more direct location and your insights there at the conclusion of the meeting. If you want to speak with Mr. Cagle, he's our township manager, you guys can connect and we'll, I appreciate you for bringing that to our attention. Any other comments this evening? Okay. Seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
Send it.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. If we want to just take like a two or three minute break and then we will